Okay, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Going to call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Republic.
It stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We do have one condolence this evening on behalf of the town council to the family of Robert Souza. Upon his passing on December 4th, 2021, Mr. Souza served in the 657th QM Company, 7th U.S. Army in the Republic of Germany during Vietnam War. He was an active member of the Bridgewater Vets Club. We'll have a moment of silence for Mr. Souza, all those veterans and first responders who have passed.
Also announced the statewide mask advisory, but some citizens now are urging for tougher stats. The state is recommending them.
There. Thank you. Okay, as a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded in pursuit to Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. An act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens wish to tune in may do so via Zoom and Facebook Live. First item on our agenda is approval from the minutes from the previous meetings on December 6th, 2021. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
See, none, although move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Go ahead, Deborah. I apologize.
All right, it's seven, uh, seven zero, sorry.
No worries. Thank you. Moving on, Item B, announcements from the President. I do have one brief statement. As much as we had all hoped that we would overcome COVID-19 virus as we close out 2021. That is simply not our current reality. The Omicron variant reminds us that this stubborn virus continues to pose a new and complex public health challenges. And while the science is still evolving and it appears that this variant is highly transmissible, even very early indications that it produces less severe than the Delta variant. Consequently, at this point in time, we need to continue to keep the public health measures that have kept us safe and in place and continue town council meetings in a remote fashion through the end of February 2022. Thank you. Moving on, next item, proclamations. We have none. Next item is citizens' open forum. Do we have any citizens wishing to speak during citizens' open forum? I do not see any hands raised. Merrily Hunt.
Merrily's there.
She's on mute.
Merrily muted.
Can't hear you, Merrily. You're still on mute.
I think she's trying. This isn't boding well for my statement to stay on remote till February.
Okay, what happened to her?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
She's got it.
Finally, I'm so sorry. I'm on my iPad instead of my computer and I just wasn't, there was no button to push. I'm very sorry. Good evening and I hope everyone is preparing for great holidays. I just have a very brief update on what I've told you the last time. We were preparing to have nomination papers ready for the school committee and the library trustees on the 3rd of January. What I have asked for and do not know yet is whether our office will be open on January 3rd. We do not have a holiday marked on the 2021 calendar for New Year's Eve on Friday. So that would kind of normally say that then we would have the 3rd as the holiday, but I don't have that confirmed. So basically to the council and then to citizens who might be watching and anyone who's intending to run for either the school committee or library trustees, I just want them to know by the 4th, I'm sure we will have nomination papers. If we're open on the 3rd, we'll have them then too, but I'm not sure we will be open. Okay? Thanks. Sorry. I will now try to figure out how to mute myself again.
No worries. Thank you. Any other citizens for citizens' open forum? Okay, I do not see any. Moving on to Item E, appointments. We have none. Moving on to F hearings. We have one before I call them hearing together. I believe the town manager is looking to withdraw this hearing.
Mr. President, that is correct. We are going to, I am in a request that the council allow me to withdraw this. And by way of explanation, the school district had placed tennis courts on the capital, their capital plan. I gather from my discussion with the superintendent today that the district had received a great deal of feedback from families and certainly residents that asked it to prioritize the replacement of the track prior to installing newer, repairing existing tennis courts. Excuse me. So that he did mention the track had been offline for close to 10 years. And when the track team has meets, they have to do it away at away meets. So the most recent estimate for a cost on the, on the new replacement track is $850,000 for an eight lane track with grass field in the middle for used by soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, or other, other sports. So we will, if, if you permit me to withdraw, we will come back with a revised capital appropriation at the January 4th meeting and start the process again. So I think, I think that was too big an amendment to make to the capital plan to continue on. So I would request that that get withdrawn.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm happy to hear that the school district is looking to replace the long overdue track and making that a priority. There's hundreds and hundreds of kids that use that. Any objection from the town council?
None.
Seeing none. Okay, I don't believe that requires a vote. Okay, so we can move on. Next item is G, license transactions. First item is petition P 2022-001, annual renewal, all alcohol and attendant licenses. I'll defer to the town manager. If you just want to make a quick, brief statement on what it is and then we'll move on to a roll call vote.
Sir, excuse me, certainly, Mr. President, the first item on your agenda, GA addition 2201 is the annual renewal for all alcohol. And as part of the all alcohol licenses, we put any attendant licenses such as common Vic or entertainment. We built those right into the alcohol licensing. So excuse me, you'd be voting on, on those all alcohol licenses plus the attendant licenses. No dramatic, no changes at all in these licenses over your prior year.
Excellent. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? See, and none move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Whoop, he's not here. Sorry. And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, moving on B, petition P 2022-002, annual renewal, automatic amusements.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Let me just get back to my place. Automatic amusements. Believe you only have a couple of these and these are simply video games or, or pinball. Nobody plays pinball anymore, but video games that require a town licensing.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, Item C, petition P 2022-003, annual renewal, auto dealers, class one, two, and three.
Very simple, auto dealers, class one, two, and three. Class one is new vehicles, class two, used, and class three, essentially junk or parts. And no dramatic changes to these either.
Okay, entertaining emotional proof.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? See, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, Item D, petition P 2022-004, annual renewal, common Vic, no alcohol.
Mr. President, these are establishments that do food preparation, but do not have alcohol services or sales.
Okay, entertain emotional proof.
So moved.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? See, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, moving on, Item E, petition P 2022-005, annual renewal, annual entertainment, no alcohol.
Mr. President, this is our one entertainment, annual entertainment license, and it's for Music Alley at 64 Central Square.
Okay, entertain emotional proof.
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion? See, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, Item F, petition P 2022-006, annual renewal upon secondhand gold dealers.
And very simple, Mr. President, this is secondhand pawn shops and, and gold dealers, two of them in town.
Entertain emotional proof.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, see, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Moving on, Item G, petition P 2022-007, annual renewal, lodging house.
Mr. President, also very simple. These are current holders of lodging house licenses that are looking to be renewed, as the council knows and has experienced about a year ago, issue with lodging house licensing. We have a new ordinance that precludes us granting any more in addition to these five. So these are the five that are left.
Okay, entertain emotional proof.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? See, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item H and Item I, I believe defer to the town manager. You wish to withdraw?
Item I?
H and I. Taxi cab and antique dealer.
Oh, I'm, my apologies. Yes, at this time.
Okay. Okay, moving on, H, presentations. We have none. Moving on to I, town managers' report. First item is Mitchell School Update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very little report on the Mitchell. It's going along as planned and as scheduled. And timeline still looks good with a completion date of 2022, summer of 2022. The next meeting of the Mitchell School Building Committee is Tuesday. It's a Tuesday this time, not a Monday. It's generally a Monday, but this, this is coming after a holiday, I believe. So it's Tuesday, January 11th at 6:30 PM on via Zoom. And again, anybody wanting more information, bridgewaterschoolproject.com. And all the information and, and the history of the entire project is right there. So, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Awesome. Thank you, Council George.
Thank you very much through you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, we did receive information in regards to a change order. The question I have is within the contingency, there is a contingency for change orders within the overall budget, correct?
Correct. Very large contingency, actually.
Okay, and that, and obviously the change order fits within that contingency budget, correct?
It does fit within that. And, and the, the building committee has approved a very small number of change orders. And I can tell you that they were all, because that's one of the things that anybody in my position looks out for change orders, but I can tell you that these were necessitated by either supply chain issues or site conditions generally. But can't answer your question, Counselor, absolutely. Let me, anything, any change order that you're looking at clearly fits within, within the.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from the town manager? Sean, I would just add to sitting on that committee, the committee's done an unbelievable job of holding the line on those change orders and any changes and certainly understand that they're not coming back to the town requesting any additional funds. So.
Right. And Matt, that was the reason for my question. You know, the contingency budgets in there for these things. I had a couple of people ask, is there, is there a possibility of coming back for more money? And I said, as it stands right now, no, everything's within that contingency budget.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on, COVID-19 update.
COVID-19 update, I don't think there's any shock that, that we've seen our numbers in Bridgewater trend up over the past few weeks. We have right now 113 reported active cases as of the end of last week. No hospitalizations that we know of. And, and we did note that most of those cases were breakthrough cases, which I don't think is a shock to anybody either at this point, given the news. Our vaccination rate in Bridgewater is slightly higher at 61%. Are fully vaccinated and 68% have at least one shot. So that was gradually. We have not, in response to a number of different questions we've received, we're not, we are certainly recommending that people who come into town offices wear masks. Excuse me, we're not requiring that, nor mandating it as of now. So we recommend it and staff certainly has the option to wear, wear a mask if they so choose and follow the protocols, obviously. I think as the council knows, we received about 8,400 test kits from the state on Thursday. And between Monday and today, I believe we've distributed almost all of those. The kits were distributed by the state with about a day's notice and came actually after we've been told specifically that we would not receive any in this round, but, but we did receive obviously 800, about 8,400 kits. Fire Department tried to make sure that, that we covered the most vulnerable populations and tried to make sure that they had access to those kits. And to that end, we distributed through the Housing Authority, the Senior Center, the library, High Pond, and also through both fire stations and the police station. So as I mentioned, most of those, most of those have been distributed. We're confident they made it into the right hands. So we're happy about that. We have been told for those that didn't get one or didn't get a couple, we are told that the federal government has committed to providing more test kits in the future, but we don't have a timeline on that. The same things that got handed out are also available online from any number of online retailers. They're also available when, when they are in stock in, in box stores and pharmacies and such. So, so there was no magic to the ones that we handed out. They were the same ones that are available widely online for, for purchase. So that is what I have for COVID, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council on COVID-19? Michael, I have no question, just a public comment. Want to thank the work of the fire chief and the fire department and the Board of Health, certainly distributing over 8,000 test kits over the last several days. It's something that is not really their responsibility. And you know, they really step up and done an incredible job of getting those distributed. And in particular, I appreciate the fact that we didn't forget about the Housing Authority and certainly people who are coming in and out of the senior center, the most vulnerable population. So I appreciate that. I know it's the going above and beyond, you know, the normal busy day to make that happen. So thank you.
We'll be happy to pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to discussions. A member of the council have anything up for discussion? Okay, seeing none.
President, President Rushton?
Yes, sir.
If I could, if I could ask through you to people on Zoom, if, if someone has anything going on in the background, if they mute their phone, it's becoming very distracting. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, committee report. So are there any committees that want to provide a committee report? Okay, see, and none. Move to Item L, legislation for action. First item is A, ordinance D, FY 21-011, amend Article 2, Section 2-1, composition eligibility term of office. Defer to Counsel Gallagher if he wishes to say anything additional.
Well, I think, thank you, Mr. President. And by the way, Deborah, I think I can get in. I think I got cable back. So if you can let me in the meeting, so people can see me, so people can see me. The this was referred to the committee. So I know it's been amended a few times.
Recording and.
I'll give you a minute to get set up, Dennis.
Got it.
Awesome. There you go.
So anyway, I think it was referred, referred to me, so I defer to the, to the rules and procedures because I know it's been edited a few times.
Yep. Okay, so Counsel Moore.
Sure. So on behalf of rules and procedures, I can provide an update on this. So I think when, when we originally saw it, it really had, I think it just had Section A. And the task was to update the numbers based on where we landed, which we've done. On the advice of, of the town attorney, we also included Section B and C in there, as you, as you see here. So Section B was essentially some spelling changes. Section C was added so that we could link these changes to the transition plan. And then we also included the next business day language that was recommended by the Charter Review Committee. And so that we didn't have to touch the same clause again. Both changes were incorporated there.
Okay, excellent. And all those are reflected on from the original document where we had XXX, and now it shows nine members, shows three districts. Okay, excellent. Thank you for your work. Okay, Counsel Chase, apologize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a, a point of information. I, I think that perhaps still in the Rules Committee is a companion piece of legislation that speaks to term limits. Am I correct in that regard? I, I can understand that we're putting this measure forward in view of the need to get it in place for, for the election. But if I'm correct, the term limit provision is still in committee. Is, is that accurate?
Yeah. Yes, that's, that's correct.
I thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, see, there's no further discussion. Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, moving on, Item B, ordinance D, FY 22-015, amend Article 7, Section 7-4, districts of the town of Bridgewater Home Rule Charter by Special Act Legislation. Now I would entertain a motion to approve on that.
So moved.
Have a second. Any further discussion? See, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, moving on, Item C, ordinance D, FY 22-016, amend Article 1, Section 1-9, definitions of the town of Bridgewater Home Rule Charter by Special Act Legislation. Entertain a motion to approve on this as well.
So moved.
We have second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, see, and none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Item D, ordinance D, FY. Item D, ordinance D, FY 22-017, amend Article 7, Section 7-3, Little A, signature requirements of the town of Bridgewater Home Rule Charter by Special Act Legislation. Also entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Gallagher.
So we're approving this tonight with the, so the signature requirement is as presented, 60 for at-large candidates and 40 for district? Right?
That's what's in there, yes.
Okay. And I didn't know if we wanted to amend it even lower, but I was going to make an amendment to lower it to 50 and 25. Is it too late to do that? Huh?
I missed whoever spoke. You want to amend it to 50 and 25?
50 for at-large and 25 for district. If it's too much.
It's not, no, it's not too late to file, file to amend. You just have to vote on it, but it's not.
I'll, and I'll, I'll second that motion on the.
Second. Is there any discussion? Counsel Moore.
Sure. I put in this original 1640. I also support the 50 and 25. I think it makes sense.
Excellent. Move for a roll call vote on the amendment.
All right. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
So that's six to one.
Okay, now we are back on the original ordinance. We have a second. Is there any other further discussion or proposed amendments?
Yeah, here comes the fire department.
Okay, see, and none entertain a, excuse me, a move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
There you go.
Okay, next item on the agenda, E ordinance D F Y twenty two dash zero one eight amend article ten, section ten dash seven. Time of taking.
Go around to the back.
Thanks. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Uh, Mister President, I'm sorry, um, I I need to point out the fact that uh the town clerk has made us aware that the date of the election.
Counsel Chase, I was hoping we could just uh, just like the last one, um, let's get to a second open discussion. You can propose amendment change in the date. And we'll do the same thing if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Beautiful. Do we have a second?
Exactly.
Okay, open for discussion, Council Chase.
Uh, it's been brought to the council's attention by the town clerk that the uh date cited uh in the proposed ordinance of April thirtieth is incorrect. And the town election is scheduled for April twenty-third. And uh, I would make a motion that the appropriate uh change be made to um paragraph, subparagraph A of that date.
Mister Chase, if if I may as well, I know we discussed this at the last meeting. I had made pretty extensive um mostly typographical in a sense, but a couple of substantive edits that I had circulated to the council clerk and the town manager, I believe yourself as well. Um, I'm not, I don't see that those got in there for to move to amend. Um, I, because I don't see them in the packet, not sure if that's something you wanted to move to amend to. Um, they're mostly just logistical changes to to make it flow. Um, but if you don't have that, I'm happy to send it to you. Uh, if you want to motion those, um, but those were the ones that we had discussed at the last meeting.
That's right. Yeah, I recall the discussion, uh, uh, Mister Rollins, and I I appreciate that. That is, um those were, in fact, the uh edits that we were contemplating last time, and I had thought that this version did incorporate those edits.
I don't, I don't believe that it does, but I I can verify that. Let me see. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that it does.
Hmm.
So Mister President, would be in order to um defer this to our next council meeting? Pending pending review of the additions of the town attorney?
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm okay with that as long as uh we we have enough time.
I believe we still do.
So so Attorney Rollins, you're saying this is not what we discussed last time. It doesn't have.
Yeah, it doesn't. So I I had circulated my red lines and then a clean version of it. Um, last, maybe on December sixth, I think it looks like in my email. Um, I don't see any of those edits in there. Um, this looks like it's maybe the original version, so I don't see that those got incorporated. Um, I can send it and you all can look at it and move uh today if if you want to try to push it along, but if you want to review it very carefully, by all means, you should do that as well. You know, obviously, the sooner the better, uh, but I just, I noticed in this packet, it doesn't incorporate those.
All right, so we should be able to table it and change the date and make those changes to the next meeting.
Mister, Mister President, before we move forward on that through you to the town attorney, so Mister Rollins, if we move this to the next meeting, that that is still time for us to vote it, approve it, and submit it by the deadline to the legislature, correct?
Well, I mean, the 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 deadline is obviously as quickly as possible, right? So we're, my hope is ASAP, so it would be ideal to submit it now. I think they're probably on a break anyway until your next meeting, to be honest with you. I don't think we're losing a lot of time if you voted on the fourth as opposed to a two days before the Christmas holiday, so I'm not overly worried about this next, you know, couple of weeks. Um, but I would not push it past that. I think from the fourth on is our best chance to get it done as quickly as possible. Um, but I believe Mister Chase, uh, the town council clerk, um, and Mister Wood may have a copy of that. If anyone needs an extra copy of it, by all means, reach out to me. Um, but I I've done a clean version of it and a redlined version.
Okay, I can appreciate that.
I can circulate that um uh by way of um uh the council clerk's office.
Okay, so we will table it to our next town council meeting.
We have to do a roll call vote, correct?
Yeah, is there any objection to that?
Just make sure you continue it. Don't table it.
Okay.
No, I said continued, yes.
Entertain a motion to continue the next town council meeting.
So so moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any other further discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Hey, thank you. Moving on, item F ordinance D F Y twenty two dash zero one two zoning ordinance zoning map amend amendment one sixty-eight to one eighty Broad Street, uh entertain a motion to send the appetites for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Thank you. Moving on, item G ratification of the town manager's contract. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, say to my Council Moore, any discussion?
Oh, just a comment if I could.
Council Gallagher.
If I could just comment, um, Mister President, um.
You can silence yourself.
I don't know what their background noise is. I got nobody here. Um, so during executive session, you know, we had some good back and flow between the entire council on this issue. And although I have, I had some, I have some concerns about uh some of the things I did read through the contract, I I think the the details the detail, the details of the contract, I think, are fine. My point in executive session, and if those minutes are ever brought forward for approval, I think the public will see what what my concerns were. And I just think with all that's going on in the town, I think perhaps this was a good time to go through the process of getting a fresh face and getting a different perspective and move in a different direction. So um although um I have some concerns, I'll be, I I am going to vote no on this tonight. Um, and I hope that if it is approved, that I'm certainly looking forward to working with the town manager over the next three years.
Appreciate that. Any other comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I would just add that, uh, you know, at least for me tonight, I I think that um our town town manager you know, has brought a level of stability to town government uh that we haven't had in a very long time. We have a number of major projects that are in the works or currently under construction. I thought it was really important to keep that stability um in the respect of all of the department heads in town that they have for Michael as town manager. Um, you know, for a few more years, so I I'm happy to vote tonight and uh I'm glad that we're you know, hope that we get the votes to to keep Michael here for another three years. So with that, I'll move for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
No.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
No.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
No.
It's, let's see, one. Four, two, three, four to three. Five to three, sorry.
Thank you. Moving on, item M, old business. We have none. Next item is N, new business. First item, A resolution R F twenty-two dash zero zero five town council meeting dates twenty twenty-two. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion on it? Council Souza?
Yes, um, we we do have a proposal coming in uh for a stipend for the council members. Okay, uh, based on X number of dollars, which will be equally divided into twelve months. Okay, and if that is passed with our next election, okay, if it goes to the state and comes back and gets passed in April, will it take effect in July or June of this year? If so, then July and August should go back to having two meetings in it instead of just one. Like all the other ten months.
Okay, that that's something you'd have to change in the charter and not here at the council meeting. I'm just setting the the meeting dates.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, moving on, item B order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three three loan order for upgrade of the wastewater treatment facility. I'm going to defer to the town manager.
Uh, excuse me, Mister President, the uh the plant upgrade uh that you had appropriated money for back in twenty nineteen appropriated roughly uh thirty-three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. That uh expense has now climbed. That is now the all-in cost of the plant is now estimated to cost forty-two million, eight hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-seven. That's an increase of over nine million dollars. Um, and is due to a number of factors, which is spelled out, I think, in the uh letter that you have in front of you from um uh our owner's project manager, manager, environmental partners. Most of that is due to escalating construction costs, and as you might recall, we are required uh by consent decree uh from the EPA and the DEP to undertake this upgrade. Uh, both to reduce nitrogen uh discharge and phosphorus discharge, and the cost of the project is borne by the ratepayers, but we are doing our best to offset that cost uh by importantly applying for state revolving fund money. Uh, which comes with uh no or very low interest rate and uh certainly the potential for annual principal forgiveness uh on that, on that uh loan. We're also uh pressing the state's division of capital asset management to participate in the project cost due to the university's uh location, university use of our system. And uh, and then finally, we're also proposing to use much of our ARPA funding to offset both the uh water plant and the sewer plant upgrade. So we've got some um, some um financial strategies there, uh but it is a big uh jump compared to what the estimate was back in twenty nineteen and uh and unfortunately, we're somewhat uh between a rock and a hard place on this. Um, I do believe, for what it's worth, that the estimates are very conservative, meaning that um, that it's the outer limit of what of what this uh was cost, but it but it still is a uh a large expense. Oh, the OPM and the in the designer uh fully intend to do a presentation uh both with the finance committee and with budget and finance if requested. And uh, and then certainly at the hearing uh that the council will have at uh at their next meeting, so. Those uh, those are just the the introductory comments for uh for this uh this one.
Okay, thank you. Entertainer, roll uh motion to refer the budget and finance and finance committee. With a second, we can open up for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Council Gallagher.
Um, I don't want to get into a deep discussion about this tonight because it's being referred out to a committee, but Michael, I'm gonna have a lot of questions about this when it comes to budget and finance committee meeting. Um, because I am concerned about the delay in this more than any, more than anything. I know there's a cost to it, but I am concerned about the the almost four-year delay, because this study, this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was approved in June of twenty eighteen. And it took effect September of twenty eighteen. So that's three and a half years ago that we approved the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the um for the um study, I guess it is, for upgrade. So I have a lot of questions, because nine, nine plus million dollars is quite an increase, but I don't want to get into that tonight, so I'll have a lot of questions, and I hope everybody else does, too.
Any other questions from the council? I guess I would just follow up with uh Council Gallagher's comments um on the project. Uh, you know, I do want to understand because I don't want to point fingers. I mean, I I I'm I'm concerned that the owner's project manager uh did not do due diligence at the time. I'm kind of trying to compare that with what we have going on with the new elementary school, and we're not seeing that issue uh despite COVID. Um, so just curious, again, not pointing fingers, but I'd really like to know, and I'd also like to understand uh the financial package that gets put together and whether it's born on a rate increase, you know, what that will look like uh for water sewer customers, but uh appreciate that. Thank you. So we have a second, uh no further discussion, move uh for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus? Uh, I think he's gone.
Oh. Okay, moving on, item C order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three four acceptance of non-recurring revenue to capital, defer to the town manager.
Uh, excuse me, Mister President, this is um what we commonly refer to as prison mitigation, which is probably a misnomer, but uh, this is uh an earmark within the DOC budget that uh that goes to communities hosting uh DOC facilities. Uh, the amount that we have received has climbed uh to three hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight. It's based on a population uh calculation of the uh of the DOC inmates at the DOC and allocated amongst uh or a portion amongst the amount of the amount of money that they uh that they have to dole out in any given year, so. Uh, again, uh, three hundred twenty-four thousand, seven seventy-eight, and uh, and I would recommend uh referring it to budget and finance and finance.
Okay, entertain a motion to refer to the budget, finance, and finance committee.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mister President, through you to the town manager.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mister Dutton, thank you very much. I I think this will be something ongoing. I asked um our state rep if he would be able to find out exactly what the funding formula is. If you look at other facilities within the state, some towns get significant funds. We get a small portion of that. Um, I I'd like to ask you to ask Senator Pacico and and Rep Demilia um that question again. Um, because I still do not understand why there is such a discrepancy in those payments, and it's it's public information, and no one's given any of us that information, so I'm not saying we don't accept this. Uh, I, but I I do not I'm really not happy with the fact that we get a third of what another town gets, and we have a larger facility. So thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus, still offline. Six to zero.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, item D order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three five contractual buyouts, defer to the town manager.
Uh, Mister President, as uh the council knows, we are contractually obligated to buy out uh mostly sick uh accrued sick time for a number of uh employees, um, and that is with this order uh funds. I can tell you that uh over the years, we have uh gradually uh rid ourselves of of this liability. Um, but the uh folks that have been with us for a while uh are still, uh, we are still contractually obligated to uh pay out their uh sick, mostly sick time, as I say, when uh they retire, so that is what this is.
Okay, excellent. Entertain a motion to refer the budget and finance and finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See, and none, move for a roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Okay, moving on, item O citizens' comments. Uh, any citizens here for citizens' comments?
I'd like to.
I'm sorry. Oh, Dr. Hunt, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh I'm sorry, I've got echo in my room here.
No worries. Just uh remind you, name and address. I know you've done.
Oh, Carlton Hunt.
But just wanna remind you.
Carlton, thank you. Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I just wanted to remind the council that once you've closed out and it's become public what the vote is on a executive session, it's required by the uh open meeting laws that you release the minutes of all discussions. Not later, release now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens for citizens' comments? Okay, I don't see any others. Moving on to council comments. Uh, Counselor George.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I just wanna wish uh everyone a happy and healthy holiday. Um done a lot of work this year, got a lot of work coming up next year. Uh, and also, I, I don't, don't think I could say thank you enough to all of our town employees, first responders who are still dealing with COVID, be it um responding to it, medical issues, giving out testing kits. And I've even witnessed people just having conversations to really help um smooth out some real anxieties of individuals uh that are, we're all dealing with a lot there. So um, hopefully, we have a much better twenty twenty-two when it comes to uh things of that nature. So good luck, everyone, and uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, I too wanna wish um everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And thank you to all our town employees for everything that they've been, they've done this past year, particularly these past two years. As Counselor George said, I hope at some point in twenty twenty-two, we kinda see this whole uh pandemic uh really waning down, but it, it, it'll be a tough haul the first half of the year. I think it's always gonna be with us. Um, I hope everybody stays safe. Um, and eats lots of good food. We'll see you January fourth.
Thank you, Counsel Chase.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. Uh, again, I would just want to wish all of our citizens a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Um, we always look forward to the citizen input during the uh um, uh, council portion of the evening for that purpose, and uh, I'd always like to extend a, a thank you to the citizens who do take the effort and the time to come forward and to voice their concerns or ask their questions. It's something we really need to rely upon increasingly, uh particularly in the, given the restrictions of COVID, but um please do keep that up, and in the meanwhile, please just stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Souza.
Would just about repeat everything to counsel and said, so I would just say whatever they said, thank all the citizens, thank all our employees, have a safe, happy holiday. See you on the other side.
Thank you, Counsel Moore.
Sure, so echoing what others have said, uh, happy holidays to all of you and to everyone who's listening tonight. Uh, I'd also like to thank everyone who volunteered this year in Bridgewater. I know there are people who volunteered um their time, their talent, in some case, um, you know, their, their money as well to sort of help out good causes and other residents. I really appreciate that. And maybe just sort of a reminder is that, you know, uh, great communities don't just happen. Right? They're built by the people who want them, uh, and based on all of the people volunteering in town, it seems like we really want a great community. So thank you.
Excellent. Counsel Columbotus. For the one time, you're actually muted, which is funny. And, no, he's back. Muted.
Um, yeah, just like to echo those sentiments. Um, I hope everyone has a good a nice time with family and, and, and getting together with kids home from college and stuff like that, so that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, and um my brief comment is uh I echo the sentiments of everyone, uh, particularly our employees, and we just remind people to mask up and stay safe for the holiday season. And we will see you next year. With that, we'll move to, the next item is executive session. We have none, and we'll move to adjournment, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second. Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus? Seven, six to zero.
He likes to stay in the meetings. See you, everyone.
Bye.